City Council Special Meeting Agenda for Monday, June the 20th, 2022, four o'clock PM. Calling that meeting to order, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we do have a quorum present with members Coza, Cam Carr, Carbone, Hernandez, and Berry present in the chambers. I know Councilmember Cade is walking in the door as we speak, so she's here as well. Councilmember Owens will be absent from the chambers during this meeting today. With that, we'll move to citizens' comment. Mayor Protem, I believe we have one citizen signed up to speak.
Yes, Mayor. Slayman Saad, thank you for joining us. If you would give us your name and address, and we'll have a three-minute timer on the overhead.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Slayman Saad. I live on 2016 Titan Truck Lane, Palen, Texas 77584. I love the nature trail by our house. Unfortunately, we are never able to make it pass the rusting area because we need to use the bathroom. Can we request our city council to budget for bathroom in the middle of the trail? Thank you so much. And can we please have some soap in the bathrooms?
I will say this, that's one of the most reasonable requests we've had lately. So I think that's something we could certainly take a look at. I had shared with Ms. Rosa last weekend that we can't just pop a bathroom in, we've got to make sure that we have water and sewer available along the trail, and where it gets located would be very, very important. So hopefully staff can kind of take that up and take a look at it as to where, how we could put in bathrooms along the trail. And that's certainly something that will be necessary as we continue to build our trail system out. So with that, we'll move forward to new business, new business item number one. This is a workshop, City Council, to discuss capital improvement program or CIP update series specifically around drainage and transportation. With that, I'll kick it to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. This is one in a series of our updates for capital improvement program. The last time we sat down and talked about the CIP was in March. We had our annual overall CIP workshop in preparation of the budget cycle. So this one, we'll be talking about transportation and drainage. The next time we'll have CIP in front of us, it will be July 11th. That's when we have scheduled for CIP adoption. And then going into the fall, we'll have in October, our Parks and Facilities update, as well as in December, our Water and Wastewater update. So what we do in these is we basically look at the CIP in these specific areas. We like to look at it in a holistic view with the operation and maintenance implications of the capital projects and our ongoing maintenance and operations of our existing assets as part of that conversation. So we'll start off with drainage tonight, and then we can pause at that point and have some question and input on the drainage portion of it. And then we'll move into transportation, and again, pause for that. And then we'll conclude with an update, as we've added to these update series, an update on our surface water plant. So with that, I'll hand it off to Robert. Thank you.
Mr. Upson, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Appreciate you all being here and looking forward to this update. And we'll go ahead and get started. And as Mr. Upson stated, this is our update series, and we're combining drainage and transportation together because those fit better in the overall process as we go through. So with that, we'll be talking a few things as we go through this presentation. We'll be talking about future with a purpose, drainage, then transportation, but we'll have a pause between the two for any Q and A. Near-term priorities with regards to each of those projects, and then surface water plant update, and then closing for overall questions. As we all start across, taking a look at this is that we want to make sure that we talk about future with a purpose. This means taking your strategic priorities that council has set and worked on, we implement those, look at them, review them. They mesh into our comprehensive plan, one of the items that is being reviewed right now with community development. And each of those things are fed in with our master plans from water, wastewater, drainage master plan, our thoroughfare master plan, and then, of course, working with parks, the multimodal. These all feed together as we go through with regards to capital improvement program, and that's what we're talking about today, a little bit of our operations and maintenance that goes into it as well, and then how our capital projects are moving forward in the update on that. With that, as Mr. Upson stated, this is a one in many. We are currently right now on June 20 of 2022 with drainage and transportation. In July, we'll be seeing you with the CIP adoption that was talked about back in March. And then again, in October for Parks and Facilities, and then in December for Water and Wastewater, and then to complete our cycle for this year, and then we'll do it all again in '23. So our first topic tonight, we'll be talking about drainage. Here specifically, we'll be covering several items, specifically the background on drainage, our operations and maintenance activities that Mr. Prescott will be talking about, Drainage Bond Committee update from Mr. Saresta, our projects updates, and then any upcoming But first, I want to give a brief little update on the Clear Creek Harris County Flood Control project. As we all know, is that in 2018, through a congressional action, almost $300 million was allocated to the United States Army Corps of Engineers. This was to fund the Clear Creek project that's been talked around for, I want to say, since the 60s, from what I've been told, working with Galveston Consolidated District and Brazoria Drainage District Number Four. But during that process, Harris County Flood Control petitioned to became their preliminary design and assumed that responsibility to lead, to be a lead agency on that project. So we've met and we continue to meet with Flood Control on a regular basis, studying and talking and asking where they are in their process. So our last update was on April 12th, when we were in process with the Clear Creek Subcommittee, Watershed Subcommittee that the city is a part of and a lot of other drainage entities. During that time, Flood Control mentioned that the current H and H or hydrology and hydraulic study is within the review process with the Army Corps of Engineers and waiting approval. There are several things that have to stay, is that there's a no adverse impact, must stay with environmental compliance, and the budget must stay within the authorization as given by the federal government. As of right now, they are still working on that process with the Corps. Looking at in 2022, potential, what they say is a scope update, meaning that every, all the comments that they receive from the Army Corps of Engineers wrapped together, put that in, that probably revise some of the scope. So we'll need to update that, then go ahead and get that approved, and then in 2023, looking for a RFQ from the design consultant. They're talking about progressive design build with this project, and looking in 2026, start construction with a 2031 estimated completion date. That's as of April. So please put that in that parentheses, that's where we were in April. We have met with Flood Control, but we haven't gotten any revised updates. They're still sticking to these right now with this time, but we continue to meet with them on a monthly basis.
Are they still on H?
Yes. I'm sorry, Scenario H is the one that has been locked in. They have reviewed, and let me just step back with that, Mayor. Council is that scenarios for the H and H study started with Scenario A, and has been renditioned back and forth with comments from the Corps, comments working back of no adverse impact to what the rise in flood plane was, to the decrease in flood plane, going through renditions from A through all the way now, we're on Scenario H. It appears that everyone is in agreement with Scenario H, working through some final tweaks on that, but not needing to go to a Scenario I as in igloo. So we're banking on the fact that everything will get approved, move forward, we'll get the revised scope, and then see where the final project and overall project lands at the end of the day. Thank you for that, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn this over to our Right-Away Superintendent, Dante Prescott. He'll be providing a presentation on our city drainage operations staff and the work, the great work that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Upson. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to expand on our previous operations update and specifically share insight to our drainage team. For starters, please allow me to introduce you to our team as conveyed in the last update. We merged services of the Right-Away and Streets and Drainage into a single division in July of 2020. This merge allowed for a complete streets approach to Right-Away management. Although there's currently a total of 29 employees assigned to this division, provide services ranging from contract drainage maintenance, sidewalk management, and grounds management, only six of these employees, which is inclusive of the service supervisor, are assigned for drainage maintenance services and also serve as contract managers for our current ditch and contract. I shared several times throughout this discussion that the existing staffing for both drainage and street repair services are and street repair services are below the necessary staffing needs. So staff are pulled between both service areas to ensure adequate staffing to residential needs as they arise. This naturally creates challenges, challenges in developing program based approaches to public services. A quick overview of several but not all inclusive list of assets that fall within the drainage team's responsibilities. 322 miles of enclosed stormwater pipe with over 12,000 associated storm sewer inlets, 145 miles of drainage ditch, and over 300 detention facilities. Due to past flood events, this group is also responsible for 110 buyout lots. Again, to maintain these total assets, we have a total of six drainage team members, one of which is the team supervisor and supporting engineering staff as available that work closely in conjunction with partners such as BDD4, Texas Dot, and Brazoria County. This team also closed 121 drainage related work orders in 2021, restored over 33,000 feet of open ditch, and with council's continued support, will be poised to provide inspection and maintenance to all drainage infrastructure on a 10 year rotation. A few quick items to celebrate from a resource perspective include the purchase of a combination cleaning truck, which is scheduled for delivery tomorrow and intended to support the planned enclosed pipe maintenance services. That's a 10 year rotation we mentioned previously. Council also supported the award of a ditching contract with Texas Drainage. This contract allowed for staff to complete necessary services on Westchester, East and West Circle, Long Harage, and several other site specific locations within our community. Before you now is an exhibit of our enclosed stormwater sewer collection system. We provide this as a snapshot and to better understand how vast our network of enclosed drainage infrastructure is within our city limits. Again, this is only a representative of our 322 miles of enclosed drainage system, which exists underground, rarely seen by the naked eye, and subject to impacts ranging from construction, traffic, sedimentation, debris, and directional boring, just to name a few. In addition to the 322 miles of piping, there are also 12,327 inlets that allow stormwater runoff to enter into the enclosed pipe. Additionally, just the broad spread throughout the community as this system and the engineering and public works department is also responsible for 145 miles of open drainage ditch systems that also collect water runoff and move through the community into the receiving streams. A couple of fun facts to put that drainage into perspective. If you connected the 322 miles of storm sewer in the end and formed a continuous line, it would be long enough to connect Pearland to the Oklahoma State border. Think about the potential for failure, exposure, obstructions, and impacts that could occur in that length of pipe. Additionally, the 145 miles of known ditches that fall within the city's maintenance responsibility is the same distance across the entire state of Indiana. You notice that I've referenced known ditches, and that's because until we have an updated inventory, which is in the works, and you will hear about shortly, we're basing this total on historical information stored in GIS. So why is drainage and drainage maintenance services important? Simply put, maintaining catch basin, storm water inlets, and other stormwater conveying structures on a regular basis will prevent loss of life, property, surcharge drainage system, prevent clogging of the downstream conveying system, and restore catch basin sediment trapping capacity and ensure the system functions properly to reduce or avoid flooding, flooding, excuse me. As we dive deeper, this image gives us an example of the impacts that prompt the need for regular inspection and maintenance. There are several potentials for impacts to the storm sewer system. First and foremost, this root intrusion is captured in the upper right hand corner. Commonly to, commonly referred to as root invasion, this is the process of roots penetrating the enclosed drainage pipe and impeding its ability to convey runoff. Often the roots, though small as they may be, penetrate the pipe and become compacted by other debris or sedimentation, which quickly compounds the issue and reduces the capacity of the pipe. Additional impacts range from debris, greenways such as yard clippings or leaves, wildlife which takes up residence or become trapped in the pipes and soils. Our engineering team works hard to prevent or discourage soil deposits into the storm sewer, but until the entire community sees the importance of keeping these inlets and pipes clean, we will set ourselves up for future flooding and loss. I'll add that unfortunately, at this time, and due to lack of a CCTV camera and dedicated crew, we are unable to quantify the amount of root intrusion citywide. A perfect example, you see behind us, this is an example that occurred earlier this year here at City Hall. Our colleagues in the water production division needed to drain the water storage tanks for planned maintenance. Each time they began to drain the water tanks, the water would not recede as planned or needed. Instead, this water punted within and throughout the ground surrounding the water rail site and the east parking lot of City Hall. Street and drainage staff were contacted to investigate, yes, I said, the streets and drainage staff, as current staffing levels require both to respond to ensure adequate staffing in the event such as this. When staff arrived, identified several full storm sewer inlets, some of those 12,000 plus we discussed previously, but the city is not currently in possession of a camera system dedicated for storm sewer management. Drainage staff were forced to call additional resources and staff from the distribution and collections division used their sanitary sewer camera to inspect the storm sewer. This CCTV inspection revealed the presence of root intrusion in the storm sewer. Staff were forced to excavate down to the pipe, cut a hole in the top, and remove the item you see before you today. With this in mind, think about how many other areas have just as old or as many trees in the neighborhood or along the street which have never been inspected or cleaned due to the lack of the dedicated enclosed pipe inspection. Similar to our enclosed pipe system, our open ditch system has several maintenance challenges. With 145 miles of open ditch and over 300 detention pond sites that have to operate adequately, daily drainage services are vital. In fact, this is where our current staff when I being shared for street repair projects and traffic controls are utilized. Open drainage systems are often impacted by trash and debris that float downstream and collect around inlets or culvert mouths. Like root intrusion, growing or falling vegetation have the ability to impact open drainage systems by allowing deposits, deposited debris to collect along the vegetation, creating larger obstructions that can slowly move water, that can slow water movement, increase flooding, or become large in downstream infrastructure. Lastly, open items in the process of conveying water also move solid deposits downstream. These deposits then collecting culvert pipes under driveways or roads, reducing the capacity of the pipe or changing the flow line elevation of the open ditch itself. Each of these challenges require human intervention to physically remove the obstruction, ensure the drainages are maintained from trash to vegetation, and provide in-house or contractual ditch grading services to restore the flow line of the ditch and remove impediments. On February 14, 2022, city council adopted resolution 2022-39 for declaring the council's intent to allocate funds in the additional amount of $662,000 for drainage purposes in the general fund beginning with fiscal year 23, and allocating an additional 125,000 for fiscal year 24 for a total combined allocation of $787,000. As shared in the 23 staffing memo for engineering and public works, staff desire to begin the 10 year maintenance program for the inspection and necessary cleaning of enclosed stormwater sewer systems. Via resolution 2022-39, council committed to the recommendation of eight new drainage staff necessary to provide these drainage services. The needed resources were again, a team of eight members, one camera truck, one combination truck, which is being delivered tomorrow. This image also illustrates two other key components to our drainage system maintenance and recent improvements. A total of 7.7 miles of ditching has been completed this year, 5.3% of our network. It is the intent of this 10 year program to also allow open ditch, open ditch services to be inspected and maintained on the same rotation. This chart also illustrates what our service would look like once awarded additional personnel. The map indicates the planned 10 zones that will steer this work. Also indicated in this image is the ongoing drainage asset inventory represented in yellow and red lines on the east end of town. Each drainage segment of open and enclosed ditch is being inventoried and catalogued for program development, accurate maintenance costs, updated metrics, and asset management needs. All future drainage work will be directly tied to the asset, which will aid in future CIP development and big picture view of the network. Currently, service levels, the division are, are proposed are not being met. A snapshot of that eight team member of enclosed pipe maintenance crew is illustrated here. This team is essentially broken into two services, one enclosed pipe maintenance inspection and two enclosed pipe maintenance. Similar to our sanitary sewer TV crew who conduct daily inspections on our sanitary sewer system, vital and supporting work of the repair crew tasked with moving product through the treatment plants. CCTV inspection crew for the enclosed pipe team will conduct daily inspection of the 322 miles of pipe, analyze the data, and generate work orders for supporting repair crew to report, to correct the anomalies and issues identified in the inspection. The crew will be led by a crew leader tasked with the team and assignment management, a tech assigned of the operation of the camera system, and two utility maintenance workers tasked with the traffic control and all hands on work. It should be noted that this service will require CCTV vehicle, which was requested in FY 23 budget process. Additionally, the service will require four person enclosed pipe maintenance crew tasked with repairing and cleaning the stormwater sewer system. This crew will be led by a crew leader and consist of a heavy equipment operator to run the combination cleaner and two utility maintenance workers for traffic control and day to day labor activities. That said, we will need the dedicated staff to operate this one piece of equipment. Funding of this crew allows for roughly 31 miles of pipe inspected annually and all enclosed system maintained on a 10 year rotation. Also, the funding of this dedicated team allows the existing staff to focus on ditching services within the zones and roughly 15 miles of open ditch clean or graded annually. To summarize the slides before I turn it over to the city engineer Raj, I want to leave you with this picture. Currently, we have a single drainage crew of five team members and one supervisor. Due to competing services and shared staff resources between the drainage and right of way and traditional street services, this team is only capable of producing roughly seven miles of open ditch grading a year. At this rate, will take around 30 years to complete a full rotation of open ditch and culvert cleaning. With city council's support of the necessary and dedicated drainage team, staff will be capable of cleaning our open ditch drainage system on a 10 year rotation at a rate of approximately 30 miles per year. Think about the increased families that could be protected by this rate of cleaning alone. Further, city council approved the purchase of a combination cleaner necessary to clean the ever growing enclosed drainage system, and that piece of equipment is again scheduled to be delivered tomorrow. The planned maintenance of our enclosed system will be a new service provided by the department, and this has not been a service traditionally provided within our community. However, without council's support of the enclosed pipe maintenance crew, this equipment will sit idle and service will not occur as there are currently no staff dedicated to use this equipment and conduct necessary work. With that, I'll turn it over to Raj.
Thank you, Dante, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to provide you with a brief update about 19 member drainage bond committee appointed by the city council in February 2022. A more detailed update will be presented by committee chair, Mr. Seth Thompson, at July 11, 2022 city council meeting. The drainage bond committee consists of representatives from the city council, planning and joining commission, Pearland and Albina I S D, Pearland Chambers of Commerce, PUDC, BDD4, and Citizens. The following are the main tasks assigned to the bond committee. Evaluate the city's drainage system and drainage improvement projects. Prioritize potential future projects. Identify partnership opportunities. Evaluate property tax impact related to referendum size. Evaluate the upcoming May 2023 bond referendum size and duration. Provide formal recommendation to the city council. Everything is, this task could be expected to be done by December 1st, 2022. The drainage committee met on a biweekly basis at various city facilities between March 23 and June 1st, 2022. The engineering staff provided background information about several drainage projects identified in the list of drainage projects. The information included selection criteria, expected outcome, and approximate cost of the project. Based on the drainage bond committee's direction, additional five projects are included in the preliminary engineering study. There will be a total of 17 projects, out of which 12 projects have already been awarded to consulting engineers for this study. Project staff have been working with consulting firms to scope and award the remaining five projects. The list below shows the projects selected for drainage PER. The drainage bond committee will reconvene the meeting after receiving study reports from consultants sometime in 2022. This slide presents the CIP drainage achievement between 2017 and 2021. As you can see, eight out of 10 projects have already been completed. Wesley and Willowcrest projects are under construction. As can be seen in the, in the picture, majority of the projects are located in the older part of the town with more drainage problems. The highlight of this picture is like we are investing a lot of money in the older part of the town where we have more problems, where we need more solutions. So we're going to spend almost 50 million of, within that 10 projects area. That's my update. Now, next, Robert.
Thank you, Dante and Raj. Appreciate that a lot. Great job. So with this council, Mayor and Council is, as we're heading towards is just kind of the summary of where we are on the five year CIP and talking about projects with regards to that. These are the funding obligations that's set forth up through 2024. That's when the last project associated with any bond funds or any partnership funds are set to go forth. Henceforth why Raj was talking about our PERs or our drainage bond committee and setting forth that program. Just to talk a little bit about where we are in some of these projects that are coming to completions, our detention pump station with Cowards Creek is looking at the fourth quarter of this year. Wesley is looking in the first quarter of fiscal, of calendar year 2023, along with Willowcrest towards the end of calendar year 2023. Upcoming design that are actually looking to be out for bid. This is a grant program that was with the general land office, the GLO. These three projects are then, would be funded through 100% through the grant program. Really going to get those bid out. We had a time extension associated with, with the GLO, and once that's been approved, we'll then bid these jobs. At this time, this is time for opportunity, Mr. Epperson, to head back to you for any questions.
That's all we have to present. We're ready for any questions.
All right.
Put on the drainage portion of this.
Thank you for that. Thank you to the staff. Good update on drainage. Thank you for really and truly the work that we've been able to do in maintaining part of our system. Certainly, I think our council has shown a commitment as of late that part of moving away from the, going the drainage fee that we would, this exactly what you're talking about here, we would put into the budget and then do the rest through bond programs. So certainly with our budget coming up, you know, certainly would like to see us follow through on that, make sure that that is a top priority, putting that into the budget.
Sure. Maybe a quick add on that, Mayor, if I, if I will. That, that resolution that Dante walked us through on the additional crews to, to help us maintain our drainage, that, we're going to build that into the base budget based on that. Of course, we've got to get all the way through the budget cycle and keep that in there, but it is obviously a priority of council, so we are building that into the budget, you will see.
Yeah, the sad thing is when I was on council years ago, we actually talked about it then and geared up to move that direction and then left council and it, it never materialized. So it's, it's, it concerns me. Here we are another 10 years or now 12 years, you know, removed from that, and we haven't had that routine maintenance. And so that was something, you know, we talked about, Danny Cameron talked about back when he was public works director, you know, setting that stage to do exactly what we're talking about and put the city on a rotating basis and, and do just that, maintain the, the total system over a 10 year period and just continue to start back. So with that, I'll throw it open to council, questions, comments? Everberry?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Upton, I may have missed this in y'all's presentation, but it was 2022, 23, 24, 11.3 million dollars. What, what projects do that entail or is this multiple projects?
So with regards to that, some of them are the bond So with regards to that, some of them are the bond programs that we have going on, you know, funding because they're they're obligated over. We'll have um generator, we also have taking a look at a partnership with Brazoria Drainage District Number Four, where we had partnered together, bought a a large tract of land along the Hickory Slough area uh right on south of McCard Road, and then this is a partnership with them uh to go ahead and they'll dig it all out, and we're just going to help fund at fifty-fifty value, uh, get that all dug out for regional detention. Uh, so those are really the projects.
Right. Questions, comments? Member Coza?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on page twenty-two with the list of the uh different projects we're looking at for the bond uh that the committee evaluated, what is the total dollar amount that we came up with there?
So, uh, Councilman, I'll go ahead and answer that question. I know um it's being presented and focused on by the bond committee, but we presented uh three values of sixty, ninety, and one hundred and fifty million dollars for them to take a look at and evaluate uh what projects they felt all came through. I believe uh they had talked about somewhere in the neighborhood of around ninety million dollars uh in the number of projects uh were picked out of this group.
All right. And to follow up on that, so the 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 list had ninety million, and the committee said, you know, let's pull back a couple of studies. I think there was a a Lomer process, there was a a an updated study, I can't remember the name of it, updated study, and then uh the potential of buying uh buyouts.
Yes, sir. So there was there was a couple items. One was a master drainage plan update.
Right.
Uh, there was also a firm map updates as a result of the master drainage plan and the studies associated with that to be able to uh update our maps in our city and taking a look at that with Atlas fourteen, et cetera, now that Clear Creek is is coming closer to fruition on their final mapping with Harris County Flood Control, taking a look at those. And you're right, the committee members said they wanted to focus all the funds with regards to project, so we'll need to come back with another funding mechanism.
So what what that did is it took this list to about eighty-five-ish billion. Um, and uh I I think it 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 really depends on where the P E R work comes back, because right now
It's a ballpark.
It it's a, well, it's a, it's a moving target daily, right? And so, let's get the P E R work back and and try to nail down a better number for all of this. Um, and then go back to the committee, and then the committee decide, are we still on the same path for these? This may explode, no matter, you know, no telling what it might go to, uh, but it may be in the ballpark. So if it's in the ballpark, are we going to do that? Uh, member Cam Carr talked about going ahead and keeping two and a half million in there for some of the buyout opportunities, because the best time, I hate to say this, you know, uh, but the best time to buy someone out is when an event has happened and they're ready for the buyout. What ends up happening, two, three, four, now five years after the storm, they fixed up, they've done this, they're not ready for a buyout anymore. Next thing you know, we have another big event, they're ready for the buyout. So, well, that two and a half million will be discussed back with the committee when we get the P E R work, and and I really like the the compromise that the member Cam Carr was talking about was like, let's go ahead and put it in, and over the next two, three years, if there's not that major event, it could be incorporated into projects. So I think that's a decent compromise to 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 look at, but it's, you know, we can talk about those numbers that were in these projects till we're blue in the face, but, you know, till you get out there and get real numbers behind it, then we'll know, so.
And these these, this list of projects right here, that's what we're looking at accomplishing.
That's the list. Remember Cam Carr?
Um, trying to, I sent that memo with D Z R two zero two-two. Can we tee that up to look at that in a second? Um, I I'm sorry, uh, our our normal media guys in here, so, uh, but I wanted to just add a little bit of color to that um and then go from there. Uh, the first is we, I think we charted either looking at a sixty, ninety, or one-twenty, or whatever, but we're we're kind of at that middle option. And and the real difference between the sixty and ninety million-dollar option is really the ability to go do projects in neighborhoods. There's specific four or five projects that you see, like one of those on the screen is the East and West Circle. Those are the folks that came about, I want to say, six or seven months ago, um, and they, it was many of them, and and they had literally seen their quality of life go backward as more development around East and West Circle has continued, where literally the the, their view from their front door standing up is at the ground level of where the road is, where they literally can fill themselves in the basin. Um, and so that's, you know, some of those projects that get us to that ninety are literally ones that will go into neighborhoods, people will see and feel the effects of the improved drainage. Um, and I think the big concern at the time and and still is, is what does a P E R say when it puts the scope on there in our commitment to do those projects? Um, right now, as the mayor alluded, that there is a moving target, um, and and that number is going to evolve. Um, but I think our commitment to doing projects and taking people out of out of danger is going to continue to evolve as well. So, um, I just wanted to go real quick. This was the agenda item that was mentioned, the R two zero two-two dash three-nine. Um, and and a couple of things, I I wanted to to go down, I want to say it was to the memo that was written on Jan twentieth of kind of the the operations piece that's outside of the capital projects, and I I just kind of want to understand, because the the presentation was good, but I want to ask, what you're saying regarding going and looking at pipes, the improvement is what is going to be asked for? Is that the ask that you guys are asking us to go and approve? Because I I just want to understand, what are we doing today?
Sure.
Which, as you've said, is inadequate, and where do we need to get to to get to a more plausible working uh place?
So Councilman Cam Carr, one of the items that was actually on the slides that actually is good is the summary that uh Mr. Prescott did uh with regards to where we are today. So what we are today is about seven and a half miles of open ditch, which is a combination between our staff members and also our contractors, and there is no enclosed pipe maintenance at all. Uh, so moving
Say that in English, not engineer speak.
I apologize. When we say enclosed pipe, that's a storm sewer system underground. So that's
Where that root
That's the pipes in the ground, where the root came from that's over my shoulder and the back table.
Say that, so you're doing seven mile, how many miles do we have to work with every year that we have to mess with?
So we mess, uh, we have in our ditch, uh, culverts about a hundred and forty miles of uh open ditch and culverts and over three hundred miles of enclosed stormwater pipe that is underground next to our roads.
For English, I just want to make sure. So you're saying we have three hundred and fifty miles of stuff that is not visible to the human eye where roots grow into it? Right now, we're not doing any maintenance in there.
About three hundred, a little over three hundred miles, so about three hundred and fourteen, three hundred and fifty.
Is there maintenance in there right now?
I'm sorry, that is correct.
There is maintenance or there is not? We don't have a
The maintenance that is done is on an as-needed basis. That means if we have a resident call or we have and see something in that respect, then we will go out and investigate, just like what we had over here uh when we tried to drain our water tank. Uh, that is there, then we will investigate, figure out, work with our distribution and collection team, borrow their camera truck, clean it out, and then find out what's what's happening from there.
We don't know if there's a root in any of those three hundred and fifty miles. We don't have visibility on that or know if there is or is not a root causing us to be efficient on our capacity.
At this time, on a rotation basis that we're planning and moving forward on program basis, no.
We're currently completely reactive
Yes.
on the underground system. So, an issue occurs, we react to it. We don't, we don't inspect, so we don't know how um how many roots are out there.
All right, understood. Uh, one last thing, and I'm going to get off my horse. Uh, page nine of fourteen on this document, I I just want to reiterate that for everybody out there. Um, they can't all see this tremendous root um that's in front of us. Uh, next page, I think. So one that has kind of the blue chart kind of on top. Page nine of fourteen, there you go. So number four, can we scroll down just a bit? So I just want to read the first line and then first two sentences. For ongoing regulation update, the most updated rainfall frequencies by the National Air and Atmospheric Administration NOAA has pushed a hundred-year rainfall depth from thirteen point five inches to seventeen point eight. Approximately, I'm going to insert here about thirty percent of the parent. The new Atlas fourteen rainfall data has already been adopted by Harris County Flood Control, and Harris County Flood Control is currently working to prepare and implement new flood maps, blah, blah, blah. So I want to ask here, the the standards that we have in all of the infrastructure in the ground, covered or not, is 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 essentially inferior to where it needs to be today?
No, um, we are actually going through that motion right now, Councilman, in regards to that. We do things and do our designs differently than our surrounding cities. So for example, when you're talking about thirteen and a half inches, yes, in terms of rainfall intensity rates between that and uh what Atlas fourteen is, yes, there's a dis- distant uh disparaging. But with regards to the design criteria, we designed to a three-year level storm in our system versus our surrounding cities designed only to a two-level, two-year level storm and are coming up and using Atlas fourteen. And so some of the exercises that is going on right now with staff as we're heading towards adopting Atlas fourteen is that we're finding our three-year storm event was being equivalent to the flows necessary that were handling Atlas fourteen. Uh, so when we come back, we'll be talking a lot and explaining a lot of those
Let me
motions and go from there.
Let me ask, it's different. The standard is moving even without a gigantic root sitting in the middle of the pipe, right? The standard is improving and moving, it needs to handle more flow?
So our standards need to be able to rainfall intensity is then documented to increase, and I'm I'm trying to cautiously walk through my words, and please realize that, Council, is that our system being we held ourselves to a higher design standard, okay? That is what has predicated a lot of success in our newer subdivisions because we held to three-year storm events versus saying we're going to do a two-year storm event. What we're seeing on our cities is that their two-year storm event is now causing their pipes to increase in size to be able to handle that. What we're saying is our three-year storm event is actually equivalent to what the new standard of a two-year storm event is. So we were handling Atlas fourteen just as a three-year event.
Right. I I think the point I just want to, I want to circle back and I want to, I want to hammer one more time and let's go. Right now, we're not doing any maintenance. We don't have any visual inspection of a lot of the enclosed portions of the system. We don't know if a gigantic root, I think that's probably what, fifteen feet, and there's probably more that was pulled out of the ground. We don't know what's in there or not, and for us to improve what we do have and what we are going to continue to improve, we do need the enhanced maintenance that you guys are requesting.
Councilman Cam Carr, that is correct. As Mr. Epperson stated, we are one-hundred percent reactive on the underground enclosed pipe system basing on assistance from all of our citizens and from when our staff is out during rain events to look to see what's going on.
Let me ask one more follow-up, really quickly. And once this is approved in this next budget cycle, how quick will it be for us to get visual inspection across the system? I'm I'm assuming that can't happen at all in one year. What what is the expectation?
So one of the slides that Mr. Prescott put forth is a ten-year rotation. So we are dividing the city up into ten segments. That means each year, one segment will be completed so that we will now go through the entire city on a ten-year rotation, which is falling more in line with industry standards. You're not going to inspect every single line every single year, it's not possible. But breaking up in chunks of ten-year increments, plus then having the ability for emergency services to go off to another area that needs to happen and get the guys back, there's benefits associated with that as well. Taking a look and examining, as you've mentioned, visually looking at your cleaning and taking a look at your system inside, but then you're also then helping to set up the next capital improvement program associated with storm drain, because then these gentlemen or and ladies who are working within the system are able to say, this area needs attention, we need to do work on this, and we can start programming that in our CIP.
Great. I appreciate it. It sounds like we've got a lot of work to do, it sounds like we know what we're doing, we're moving down that path. Um, I wish everybody could see this gigantic root just hanging out here. I mean, it's 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 awe-inspiring in a bad way, um, but I look forward to you guys getting out there and and having more resources so we can protect this.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I have another couple of the questions that are just kind of random. Y'all mentioned that we're we're not actually doing any uh visual inspection. Have we in the past considered uh contracting that out?
Councilman Barry, with the funds that are allocated through the budgeting process, we maximize those funds to be as best as possible, knowing that um open ditch and uh cleaning out culverts and running open ditch is vital and important. Those are the funds where they're allocated to.
Okay, that's, it was just, it's a funding thing, right? Uh, that's kind of what I assumed. Uh, and on a completely separate note, um, I know that you guys have, you know, my building here in Pearland, you guys have have come out and done an assessment and kept me up to date on, you know, the truck that you guys ordered last year, I think in July or September, and I'm glad to see that you guys finally got it. Um, or I think it was supposed to be due in October or something along those lines, but I I'm glad to see we're making progress there, and with a little bit of money that we do have to be able to put towards that, y'all are actually investing in those those types of products, and that's, it's greatly appreciated. Uh, one of the other things I I wanted to ask was, I know that a while back, y'all sent letters out about repetitive loss surveys, going to going around doing repetitive loss surveys. What's the status of that? As if, you know, I don't know for everybody that doesn't know what a repetitive loss is, but if you're, if you have a property, a home, or a or even a business, uh, that's that's flooded two or more times, that particular property can be put into a repetitive loss program uh with with the National Flood Insurance Program. But anyway, so do you have any idea? I know, I'm just throwing that out there, and if you don't have an answer, I'm good with that.
Uh, Councilman Barry, that letter that you're talking about was informing based off of the information that we receive working with Community Rating System, part of FEMA, um, and that agency is that one of those requirements that we can to continue to enhance our point value to be able to help increase our benefit to our residents by increasing their discount on those that are in the floodplain is to send those letters out. It's not a survey, but it's a letter out to say, hey, look, these are the addresses we have, some of you may have, it's, and they required us to go out by business and then by business suite, and so every address had one, um, and that was the letter system that went out. It's not a true survey, it's just that that's the information that is provided by CRS, Community Rating System, and FEMA, they make sure that those homes are identified as repetitive loss. Those residents and owners and businesses know that they have had repetitive loss occurrences.
Got you. Okay, thanks, guys.
To follow up on that, Robert, though, I I do know in Joel's office, they maintain a pretty good list of repetitive losses because part of the grant funding that we that we get, we have to identify if it's a repetitive loss uh and those kind of things. So I think we actually have that, do we have that on a map where we can show it, or we just have the addresses?
The a- the aspect of that, that's a confidential componentry.
Got it.
So with that is that, yes, we know what those addresses are, but however, if we ever need to publish, it becomes just a blob.
So we can do a heat map that can show general areas, correct?
Correct. We cannot identify specific addresses.
Okay, that's fair. Councilmember?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Uh, a couple things uh for the, you said you had a hundred twenty-one work orders accomplished, and I know in the past we kind of talked about how we've got kind of this fragmented system where uh requests can come in and work orders created and tracked. Are are we making improvements on how that's tracked across our system, like if a request comes in from resident or something along those those lines?
Councilman Hernandez, yes, those are strides that we've been making with our asset management system and work order system that we have been in-house, so we've been tracking those. Plus, that also gives an opportunity for staff to also add those in as well, track them, go for enclosed. We've seen great improvements. Uh, we've been generating more work orders than, I will say, than I even imagined. Um, already, our our staff has grasped the concept to do that, to track everything. So yes, there is
On the resident side, I think probably the number one piece of feedback that I've received has been that uh, I guess whenever a uh a request is put into the system, it's immediately, I guess, closed out on the resident's side. Is that something that's been updated to where the resident can track it more easily now?
Councilman Hernandez, I will need to get back with you on that answer, but I know that has been a concern, and we have been addressing it um with regards to that, and some of that is depending on which program is used that had been issued out, and I can't remember if that was a connect to Pearland to put in and then automatically you get a response back, but I need to answer that and get that back with our city works team and our asset manager, uh, David Melgoza.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to tie this into the the actual, like, you know, community-facing side of these types of programs to make sure that if residents are um putting in requests that they are able, or they feel as though we're actually paying attention to their request. Um, and then uh also there was a uh, you touched on this just briefly, but just maybe a little bit more color on how this ten-year maintenance program will fit in or how it's going to integrate with our asset management uh program that we've got in place now, I guess as we move along, are things going to be updated? And I think we'd mentioned that we're using historical data right now for the open ditches. How is that going to be catalogued moving forward?
Sure, so one of the draw, one of the um slides that uh Mr. Prescott put up there was the map showing the ten segments. In there was also some red lines and some yellow lines. The team has been going through that right now and inventorying. So the area that has the red lines and the yellow line, um, yellow lines on there is what they have physically gone out, inventoried, are they matching it to as-built drawings, matching it to our G I S system and updating those layers? So they are working through the entire city uh to make sure all of our assets are tracked and valued and identified and numbered.
Okay, cool. Uh, two more things, uh, and you, I think, touched on this already. Um, but so with this new, with what you're asking for as far as staff and uh the tools to do this ten-year maintenance program, um, that will include also our ability to respond to emergency situations and requests put in. We're not going to need anything additional, I guess, to do the current work plus the need anything additional, I guess, to do the current work plus the maintenance program that's being proposed.
No, as I answered, Councilman Coza, with regards to that is that also besides that, that's why it's broken up into 10 segments instead of trying to take three segments of the city is to account for emergency response. So if there is an issue in unit number seven that needs to be identified and the crew can go over there, mobilize, do the work they need to address the issue or identify the issue. And once that's completed, then go back to the unit that they were assigned to for this year to clean and catalog. If they're finished early, let's say they have a rock star of a year and get all those miles done in each unit, there is the ability to move forward and continue that to enhance and move those services forward.
Okay, awesome. And the last thing I had was if we, do we currently have any eyes on what our capacity is particularly for the areas with the open ditch on any type of nature based infrastructure, particularly if we're doing any enhancements at parks or, you know, just general easements that we've got where we could maybe build in some infrastructure to mitigate flooding and erosion? Have we looked at that at all?
Those would, if you're talking, I'm going to say more of like bio swales or vegetative detention basins, things like that. We would continue to work with our parks department to see what is most applicable. Part of it also is working with Brazoria Drainage District Four because some of the areas are theirs. And so that's going to, they run their system very much in terms of cleaning, widening it as much as possible and making sure that areas are sediment free. So that would be some things that we would need to work on if we're talking more of city owned and maintained areas. And if we're talking nature trails, vegetative or edible.
And I think generally it's my understanding that they, I guess this type of infrastructure comes with lower maintenance costs as well. Is that your understanding as well or am I?
It can come with both, depending on how they're designed, but with the avenue too, is that some of them take a lot larger area because you're trying to contain, spread out. So there's pros and cons to both and they have to be evaluated.
Okay. I just like if, if it's of interest to anyone else up there, I'd just like to see what those opportunities are. But I appreciate all the hard work going into this and I think it's great that we're finally being proactive on this. That back there, as member Cam Carr said, is a great visual. If people could actually see that, that giant root back there. And I guess that gives a whole new meaning to root cause analysis, huh?
We might want to, we might want to bring that out to the, to the next talk of town. I know we're talking public safety, but flooding and storm related events and everything else since we're going to be talking a little bit about hurricane season, put that on display would be, would be real good. So the road show, take it on the road show. The root road show, yeah. Councilmember, Jay, do you have anything?
Mayor Proton?
It's all been hit. I'd like to thank staff. Dante, you did a great job. Raj, you put up with the committee and did well with that. And yeah, all the questions and issues have been answered. So I just appreciate everybody's time.
Deal. We'll move forward. Transportation.
Back to you and your team, Robert.
Great. Mayor, council, thank you for the lively discussion on drainage, but as, as you mentioned, it's time to also move over to transportation. As we know, we have drainage underground, transportation is mobility and ability to move people. So with that, we'll go through our quick agenda, talking about goals and challenges. You'll hear from Mr. Prescott again with regards to operations. Talk a little bit about our thoroughfare plans, some upcoming projects and milestones. So with that, just kind of overview map that we have right here, I just wanted to always bring this out to show that even with the underground system and the drainage roads, open road ditches, they all mesh together and show a complex network. Traffic's the same way with our thoroughfare plan of transportation. It's a system that comprises of roads, bridges, streetlights, even street lighting, I'm sorry, with traffic signals and coordination among them, working with Tech Dot. It all wraps together to form the network that we have here. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Prescott.
Thank you, Mr. Upton, and again, Mayor and Council for the opportunity to present on operations and maintenance services related to the city's transportation network. Specifically, we'll be keying in on updates since our last conversation related to the street and sidewalk management. Let me start by first introducing you to our team. As mentioned previously, we have 29 members in the combined right of way and streets and drainage division. Of these nine employees in total are dedicated to the street specific services. Pavement marking, contract management, pothole patching, street restoration projects, sidewalk contract management and curb repair. Of these three team members remain hyper focused on sidewalk management. Lastly, last key point I'll share, if we had any large projects on, on any major road, leadership must pull staff from other areas within this division to ensure adequate staffing to get done. Staff have requested five full time employees and FY23 budget process for a street hotshot crew. As mentioned previously, this team has been actively working to enhance our transportation network and develop programs and procedures for maintaining each of the assets assigned to them. A few highlights on accomplishment achieved since we merged the division and specifically since presented on this topic previously, the city has bid and awarded a contract for street repairs in the Garden Acre subdivision. The contract includes complete restoration of streets such as Gardenia, Lori, Thelma and Lazy Ben at a cost of roughly $800,000. We successfully went live with our asset management software, City Works. We developed a GIS mapping system to manage ongoing pavement marking operations, which indicate where work has been completed. It's currently underway and aids in contract management. Lastly, we continue to close countless work orders related to potholes, curbs and sidewalk repairs indicated on the screen. Over 1,800 potholes have been mitigated and over 1,000 sidewalk work orders closed. I'll also add that thanks to council support, the division has been able to replace several key pieces of equipment such as an asphalt paver, a road compactor, a patch truck, a skid steer, a crack seal trailer, a backhoe, all of which aids in our capability to make localized and minor street repairs. Important to note on this image captures the city maintain infrastructure and excludes the ETJ or Tech Dot. Similar to the image provided for our enclosed pipe network, this slide captures the breadth of our sidewalk and street network managed by just nine team members. Represented in white, we have a total of 971 lane miles of roadway. Of these 743 miles are concrete and 243 miles are asphalt. Additionally, this team is responsible for the maintenance and management of over 617 miles of sidewalk highlighted in blue. Specifically speaking on infrastructure growth, not too terribly long ago in 2006, the city was responsible for a mere 575 miles of streets and 346 miles of sidewalk. Since then, we have increased this infrastructure by 69 and 70% respectively. As forward to 2026, again, not too terribly far down the road, no pun intended. Intended, we will have over 1,000 miles of streets and 630 miles of sidewalk within our inventory. This is almost double the infrastructure in only two decades. Some historic challenges, and while they may not be historic in most cases, they're still just as real today as they were 20 years ago. As mentioned, the city's infrastructure continues to grow at a rate that outpasses the human capital, which has remained stagnant. Equipment and contractual resources, moreover, the division has been focused on a firefighter approach to infrastructure management where resources and span of control only allow to focus on the hottest or most vocal fire first. Moving forward, staff are developing business plans and policies that steer resources and prioritize work efforts. Lastly, staff are utilizing outdated software and pavement condition data, last recorded in part of 2017 and before that, 2014, to steer maintenance programs. More to come on that topic, but we intend to remedy this item with the new pavement condition survey in the coming months. Additionally, it should be noted that city council has enabled the team to advance its fleet with the purchase of several pieces of replacement equipment and for that we do say thank you. Although it is easy to talk about the filling of potholes or restoration of pavement markings or street sweeping, we understand that the scale and complexity of services such as localized street repair are at a time more difficult to articulate. That we provide again a slide of a typical day to day repair on an asphalt street. The same repair and work zone can be recreated hundreds of times over within our community. A key thing to call attention to is the entire nine team member is required and represented here. Should absences occur or any positions become vacant, staff are being pulled from other service areas to backfill here and keep our roadway safe and commutable. You can see here for a routine patch, we need staff dedicated to traffic control, which provides safety to the team and the commuting residents. Equipment operators such as haul trucks, package trucks, rollers and backhoes. What about the boots on the ground? Shoveling the hot mix asphalt, asphalt that arrives to the site at roughly 275 to 300 degrees. How hard it must be to keep a team motivated, morale in high conditions like that? What is worth your continued support and assistance and replacing wider equipment speaks louder than you know. And again, for that, we say thank you. Mentioned previously, staff are currently utilizing pavement condition, condition data that was originally captured in 2014 for all streets. Then again, captured in 2017 in response to potential flood damage from Hurricane Harvey. Staff have developed a bid document and intend to present a recommendation to city council for this award of this contract to the most qualified bidder. The study was budgeted for and following the award, staff intend to use this updated information to steer maintenance plans and funding needs moving forward. Staff also intend to recommend additional survey services on a five year rotation. So how do we use this pavement condition data in this index survey? Essentially, the survey provides a point value to several key indicators such as distress type, distress severity and distress quantity. While driving the roadways with ground penetrating light LIDAR, side scan accessory collectors and cameras, the collected data is analyzed to develop a point value. The point value ranges from zero to 100 with zero being the worst and 100 being the best. Each street or segment of a street is assigned a grade based on a point value and a standard rating such as fail, serious, very poor, poor, fair, satisfactory and good represented in green. While the data is outdated at this time, in 2017, the survey, when last surveyed, overall network average score was 72 or good overall. Based on industry standards, which you will hear more about in a moment, the engineering and public works department set a target goal of 70 of the PCI moving forward. This target goal will help determine the amount of investment and work that needs to occur annually to reach and maintain that target goal. I say reach strategically, as staff are concerned that the current average PCI will be below the 2017 average and possibly below our target goal. From the field perspective, to make the survey data digestible, the following slides will walk us through the point value and the condition assessment of good to fail. For starters, a newly installed street or freshly re-milled and overlaid street will receive a good or green PCI score ranging from 86 to 100. Another way to describe this score would be a roadway that is very smooth. Well, a street with a satisfactory score of 71 to 85 would no longer appear new or be void of defect. It may only have some slight cracking or a few intermittent potholes. A satisfactory road may be smooth with a few bumps or depressions. Now pavement condition score of 56 to 70 or fair and represented in yellow may be showing signs of alligator cracking and some longitudinal cracking with possible running. From commuter's perspective, the road may be comfortable with intermittent bumps or depressions. Keep in mind, our target goal is a goal of PCI, a PCI goal of 70, something like what's represented here. While a road receiving a poor score of 41 to 55 may be showing increased signs of base failures, rough ride and multiple potholes. From a driver's perspective, this can be described as uncomfortable with frequent bumps or depressions. Lastly, road scoring 11 to 40 with a very poor, serious as well as fail roadways can be described as uncomfortable with constant bumps or depressions. In these cases, base failures are evident, potholes are throughout and the road itself is in dire need of full depth reclamation. While we're excited that we do not currently have any roadways that qualify as failed in our inventory, currently we do have several that are in very poor condition. Some of those are in the Garden Acre subdivision, which you hear about again. In a nutshell, our goal is to identify roadways that are in need of minor maintenance and conduct those activities in a timely fashion prior to the street failure or roadway requiring major restoration services. This chart illustrates the value of regular maintenance to our concrete and asphalt roadway, assets throughout its life cycle and the impact of minimal investment versus the exacerbated cost of major repairs when maintenance is deferred for many years. As with everything, our roadways have a shelf life and the more we maintain or invest early on the long, on the longer that their road will be here for those who can meet this community long after us. I'll add that this chart also does a good job of illustrating the costs associated with the repairs of a poor street versus a roadway that is still in fair condition. It is not the goal of the team to target only the poor condition roads or rather spread infrastructure dollars throughout the entire network on a regular basis. I'll cover this slide quickly as you have seen it before, but from an operations perspective, this slide is a good representation of how quick a street can deteriorate in just eight years. In 2011 and 2019, a deterioration of 35 points on Harky Road occurred. Unfortunately, we restored this road via interlocal activities with Brazoria County in 2020. But if we stay on that same timeline for their cooperative paving support, it'd be roughly 74 years before we can get back there again with their team. Without ongoing maintenance services such as chip sealing or crack sealing, this road could fail seven times over by the time the county is able to appear once again. Moving ahead, we'd like to reiterate that the engineering and public works department has determined that the target goal for the average network or our community is 70. This is an average road network in fair condition, comfortable with intermittent bumps or depressions. In 2014, with an average PCI score of 72, it was determined that an annual operations budget of 4.9 million was required annually for five years to maintain that PCI of 72. We anticipated update, we anticipate update budget and investment numbers as part of the forthcoming pavement condition survey. It should also be noted that in the southern portion of the United States, the national average PCI is a 65. That number actually dips lower in the northern portion of the United States due to the impacts of snow and freezing temperatures. Although we haven't spoke about it heavily or in this past discussions, we do want to point out that the concrete and asphalt do have an average shelf life. This life can be extended with routine and proper and appropriate maintenance services. Concrete has an average life expectancy of 20 to 40 years depending on the use and traffic. While asphalt has an average shelf life of only 15 to 30. Again, this is with regular, timely and adequate maintenance services such as crack sealing, chip sealing and other related services. So you heard at this point Garden Acre subdivision, street restoration referenced several times. In summary, to point out, city council awarded a contract with tandem services for road repair services in this area and the estimated amount of $807,000 to $810,000. The average PCI in 2017 for this subdivision received a pool score of 43.5. These repairs and needs are critical and the staff have conducted emergency and temporary repairs, but broader and complete work is necessary in the reduced areas. Now that bid documents have been created and are able to be used by the division as a template moving forward, it is intent of the engineering public works department to bid the Clear Creek Estate subdivision shortly afterwards of the Garden Acres contract. The funds were budgeted for and are available for these streets and these streets, much like Garden Acres, have been communicated for an extended period as key points of focus in previous street and sidewalk white papers. It is anticipated that due to the team's ability to conduct maintenance and localized repair services, continued outsourcing of large scale multifaceted street repair projects will be our focus. As we draw close to closing out our portion of this presentation, we want to take just a couple more moments to focus on a few highlights as well as goals for the division moving forward. As indicated, this team completed two streets via interlocal pavements, pavement services, stone and harky just prior to COVID sinking its teeth into this country. As it stands, we have an agreement in place for the next round of interlocal paving activities with Brazoria County and that work is scheduled for July 5th. Roads to be paved under that agreement include Old Alvin, Veterans and O'Day. We also have Fight, Garden, Hawk, Hill House and Walnut teed up for FY23. Interlocal paving with the county, but due to their scheduling, that plan has been pushed out to an undetermined time in FY23. A big thank you again to Mayor and Council for the replacement of the key equipment. Moving forward, we intend to replace one last piece of equipment this year, which is our large articulated front end loader. We also look forward to refining a new crack seal program of which you all have approved the purchase and is in production currently. And once again, I'd like to say thank you for everything that you've done for the division. Continuing in theme of accomplishment, the team again has developed systems to monitor and define prioritized work as relates to sidewalk infrastructure. With over 1,000 sidewalk work orders closed since the merger. since the merge of the division, the team has invested over $650,000 worth of sidewalk funds. Moving forward, this team will be developing a gap sidewalk program to steer plans and investments towards critical needs and missing sidewalks throughout our community. Last that you bear with me as I take this presentation over the finish line, but there's been a tremendous amount of achievements completed by this team since the last time we met. Based on council's feedback, at that time, staff did evaluate the sidewalk maintenance program, analyzed the data, and determined that on average, repair costs of roughly 38 by four feet of a little over 100-foot section of sidewalk comes at a repair cost of roughly $1,300. At this time, we have over 804 work orders on the books with an average estimated repair cost of $949,000. That said, we have now also started a proactive inspection process where the team is dedicating time regularly to walk each subdivision and identify safety issues in our sidewalk network and submitting for repair before they cause any injury or harm. As I close, this slide illustrates the amount of change and closure of work orders since July of 2020, when this program transitioned to the right-of-way division and up to June of 2022. Each data point represents a work order. As you can see here, there was an extensive backlog of sidewalk repair requests. The team quantified and made necessary efforts to correct. Not that there are no work orders older than July of 2021 that were determined based on the sidewalk policy to have a high priority ranking. Keep in mind, our dashboard is a living resource that's continually being updated as the team workload allows. The after picture is a snapshot in time that illustrates, well, the value of this team and the hard work that they have applied to improving this sidewalk management program while simultaneously implementing other programs necessary to illustrate similar positive results. With that again, I say thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Upton.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Great job. Appreciate that. As we continue moving forward, we're going to talk a little bit about our traffic thoroughfare plan. Just briefly, this is what helps guide us when we're talking with development, talking with Tech Dot, and just setting plans forward as we review our mobility. With that, one thing that we're looking at, this was done back in, when I say is approved in August 9 of 2021, there was a small transition that was done. Few modifications here and there, but originally, this was done in 2012 using data that we collected over time and then projected out 2014, 2015. And talking about that 2015, is this 2015 traffic management plan? In that traffic management plan, taking the traffic volumes that were collected, also took a look at major corridors that we may have, looking at widening accidents associated with them, also then looking at basically improvements associated with our intersections. This focused on what would be dual lefts or free right turns and timing changes. Some of our most critical intersections, or I should say, most critical roadways that had accidents, of course, were associated with Broadway at 288 or in that corridor. So we've let Tech Dot handle that, as Tech Dot's coming forth with a road widening project for Broadway. We have focused our attention with regards to areas outside of that and then also with our intersections. Few things to realize is that sometimes our roads are wide enough and can handle the volume, it's the intersections that are restricting it. That comes down to capacity in the intersection. Do I need to add a free right turn versus making a through and a right at the same lane, causing people not to be able to go straight because we're waiting for a right turn or a right turn, et cetera? So those are keys to mobility, and that's why we also recommend through this 2015 report with several intersections to be looked at for dual lefts and improvements. So with that and forthcoming, as we've talked a little bit about, is that we have a partnership going on with Houston Galveston Area Council, HGAC, to conduct an update to our thoroughfare plan. This is, was submitted by staff, was agreed to. We've scoped out the project, scoped out the level of effort that's going to happen, and it's an 80/20 funding, meaning 80% coming from HGAC, Tech Dot, 20% city-funded. This will be for our entire city to do a thoroughfare plan update, also then taking a look at a specific project that would come with looking at the area between McLean Walnut, all the way down to Friendswood, and looking at the expansion of the capacity in Broadway Road. They'll conduct traffic counts and evaluation, develop that. We'll have, of course, with HGAC, there'll always be public input, public meetings, but we're waiting right now with regards to their advanced funding agreement or FA with, AFA with Tech Dot, which should come about fourth quarter of this year is when they're looking to be approved on that. So then, moving forward with our five-year CIP summary, similar to what we did in drainage, these are roads that are either partnership like Makawa, Smith Ranch Road, there's a lot of funding associated with those, and moving on through those programs. And then ending, as we said in the funding portion of 2024, after that, we'd be looking at the bond program that you have requested, take a look at any roads that may be qualifying for that 2023 bond to be able to carry out into 25, 26. Talking about completions, moving forward towards the calendar year, third quarter this year on Perlin Parkway, our traffic improvements, those are new signals. Currently, right now, we're just waiting for the signal cabinets, as we all talked about delays and associated with chip shortages. One of the components is our controller, and that has a chip. So we're waiting on the chip to show up to be able to get the controller going. Then, of course, McCard Road, I'm sure many of you have seen those update memos and the aerial photography with that. McCard Road is looking to be fourth quarter of this year. Instruction contracts moving forward. As we take a look at that, we'll be talking about intersection improvements. We've actually bid this job. We'll be talking about bringing this to a ward. Safe routes to schools, Tech Dot asked us to rebid that job, so we are in the getting ready to do the advertisement phase and then issuing that back out. And then, of course, there's a couple TERZ projects in there, Shadow Creek Parkway landscaping, street lighting, sidewalks, all together. That's working with TERZ number two and doing some enhancements there on sidewalks. And then finally, contracts as we have moving forward that are planned at this moment in time is Broadway and Perlin Parkway intersection enhancement there, as talked about in our 2015 thoroughfare plan or traffic, sorry, traffic management plan. And then, of course, what I already mentioned earlier with regards to the partnership with HGAC. Always like to bring this into discussion is just a little bit about some of our transit programs. We do work with HGAC, talk about partnering with them, trying to find out what our needs assessments, if there's any transit needs, partnering with Metro and working on rides programs. So as we mentioned earlier, talking about priority projects for our future bond program, this is a list here that has been presented. These projects are currently awaiting designation, and what I say by that is that they're below the funding line currently right now, awaiting to be able to move up, see if you'd like to move forward with those in a bond program. Some of those huge road, it's been talked about, that's the extension from Perlin Parkway to the city limits, creating that four-lane road. Taking a look at Dixie Farm Extension is a major extension from 35 over to Perlin Sites or Veterans. Intersection improvements, concrete sidewalk and gaps. So these are just some of the projects that are listed there. One of the things we also like to produce out, this is our CIP hub, meaning that all these presentations, all the information are updated and included on our website. This is a webpage we created so that you can go back and take a look, or looking to be able to take a look at what's going on as well. We're excited about that. So this presentation and this information will be uploaded to that when complete.
So Mayor, if I may, just say a couple of words about our team before we open it up to discussion. Just want to thank Mr. Prescott for his team and what they've been able to do. I guess Eric Hammond, is he on vacation? Y'all letting him go on vacation?
Yeah, on vacation.
So Eric is our assistant director over this group as well. So Dante and Eric have really taken this group to a new level, a very data-driven, technology-driven, programmatic approach to sidewalks as well as streets. So what you see there is a significant improvement in our sidewalk backlog. You know, we struggled with old work orders, not getting, you know, that just a growing list of work orders instead of a shrinking list of work orders. And with the things they've implemented, we've been able to really whittle that down. So, you know, the results are the best utilization of the precious dollars from our taxpayers that we get to maintain our infrastructure. So I want to thank them for everything they've done there and their team for where they brought us to over the past couple of years. And obviously, the reward for that, Dante, is you get to present for an hour in front of city council. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
That's good. I was going to say, go back to page 51 of the presentation. I think that was the side-by-side view of a year, two years, you know, of work and taking 1,800, you know, down to 800. So obviously, it can't be done overnight, but you're taking a big bite in that apple every single day, and you guys are whittling it down. This, to me, you know, speaks volumes to finding a system and then working that system. Granted, I don't know how many came on, you know, starting in July 2020, how many, you know, were added to it. But clearly, you know, you're setting a priority and you're working it just one area at a time. I guess the question, one of the questions I had on this was just in the current, you know, trying to get materials and concrete and everything else, you know, I'm hearing is harder and harder and harder to find and get concrete for the real small jobs. So when you, when you talk about the average job is, you know, 1,300 bucks and it's, I think it was 30-something feet by four feet, you know, as a section, to me, as a contractor, that's probably a definition of a small job. So I don't know how we're addressing, are we slowing down because we can't get concrete? Or are we able to maintain, you know, that level of work of eating into this, I guess, now 804, 161 are high priorities? So are we able to get concrete to be able to move at this?
Yes, sir. Mayor, we haven't had as many challenges as most cities did in this situation. One thing that we do is we have our contractor go out and basically quote out the work to be done based off the bid items, and then we schedule work to be done off of that. So we already know what the next zone is going to cost us before we send the contractor over to that area, and we schedule those work orders accordingly.
We're able to get, my big concern is we're able to get in there, and if we're going to tear something out, I just want to make sure we have concrete to go back in.
So Mayor Cole, let me just go ahead and add on to that. Mr. Prescott's correct is that, so when we meet with our contractor, it's not just go start tearing out. They need to be able to provide a quote so we can manage that. It's a task order contract, and then with that, they provide the schedule. So then at that time, then they're looking at, what am I planning for? And then their requirement is to make sure that they have concrete available at the same time, so that if they tear it out on Monday, then concrete, you know, takes some time to form, get ready, get everything ready, then on Wednesday, they're ready to pour. And that's planned so they make sure they have the trucks verified, et cetera. Yes, concrete is getting harder and harder to obtain. Those vendors are starting to use through their stockpiles that kind of had bridged this gap for a long time. Now it's just waiting on deliveries, and that's why we work with our contractor to go ahead and get a task order, get it created. Do you have the concrete? Okay, then let's move forward.
Yeah, just, I know over at the transite pipe project over in Heritage Green, concrete, you know, concrete sidewalks were pulled up to get to the pipe, and now we've got, you know, we've had empty sidewalk sections sitting there waiting for concrete, and not a day or two, but weeks and weeks to try to get the concrete. So that concerns me that, you know, not just on that project, but just being able to eat into this. But nonetheless, even with the shortage of supply, you guys are able to work through this backlog, and it'd be interesting to see. So what is your anticipated, I mean, I know you have work orders that come on on a daily basis, but taking this 804 down to 100? And I know that's a little bit of a crystal ball, but...
So may I all jump in here? One of the things they're looking at it from a programmatic standpoint is we only capture right now really what people call in about, say, I've got this damaged sidewalk. So, you know, kind of like the pro act, being proactive with our drainage infrastructure, you know, the future of the program is when you're in an area, we're going to try to survey the rest of that area, so that if there are tripping hazards or safety hazards, that we go ahead and pick those up at the time. So, you know, that just generates more work orders. So, you know, I don't, I don't know that, I think, you know, ideal world, we've got, we look at how the age of those work orders and how old they are, maybe versus how few. And I just said all that without talking to anybody, so I'll see if they got something better or something contradictory to that.
So let me go ahead and I'll dovetail a little bit more on, and then Dante can correct me as well. So with that is that we are working through work orders that are identified by residents. Residents call in, residents will identify and say, let's become reactive. Those are reactive ones where, hey, we're, we need to go over there and do a little patch right now, and we have our contractor sent with regards to zones A, B, C, D, E, and he moves through. We do red first, red being safety hazard well above our sidewalk policy in terms of what we work through and inventory, you know, so much above, above the ground or tripping hazard, et cetera. With that, then, it goes to orange and then to yellow, and those are areas that are logged. As you can tell on the map that's before you, the one after June of 2022, there's been some times that the staff has gone out and done some very proactive approach, using our sidewalk policy, going to a couple neighborhoods, and then recording all that information. So currently, right now, with doing that in a couple subdivisions, and there's some be some areas, if you take a look at the Dixie Farm Road, that's towards the edge of the city border. We went through that subdivision and identified everything according to our policy. Very enlightening, I will say, as a director, is very enlightening that my staff, that the staff went out proactively and what came back. So currently, right now, we've identified total right now about $900,000 in current level, and that's only going through a couple subdivisions, and then also dealing with the items that have been presented by residents and called out. Our approach eventually will be is to walk the entire city, measure for our policy and create a plan of attack from there. But that's as of right now.
Seems like the proactive approach would be similar to the drainage, and that's have zones and be able to do this over a, you know, 10-year period where the sidewalks are looked and reviewed. And obviously, I think sidewalks may last a little bit longer than some other areas, but maybe it's not 10 years, maybe it's 15 years. A good sidewalk done right should, should last a decent amount of time. I think what we're seeing in some of our decline of infrastructure on some of our asphalt roads really goes back to the drought of 2011. Here we are, 11 years removed from that drought, and that was 50, I think it was a 56-year, you know, the mark of, you had to go back 56 years to get something equal to what that drought, you know, was. And I think we knew then that it was only going to be a matter of time before we started seeing the subbase of our roadway start failing because of the, because of the drought was what was happening underneath. So I think some of what we're seeing in the deterioration, especially, Dante, you put that up there, you know, in an eight-year period, what we saw in one road, I think some of that may actually be some of the drought conditions deep underneath of what it's, of the damage that was done. And unfortunately, we're back into drought conditions, so, and getting worse every day. So anyway, kudos to continuing to do what we can to keep on top of it. I'll open it up to council for questions.
Back on the sidewalk issue, do we do any raising of concrete, or do we just rip out and repour?
So we'll do a variety. So we've done several. We've done mudjacking, which is, that's what that's lifting. Be able to do that, we did that down Berry Rose. It's been successful. It's a good avenue if the concrete sidewalk is structurally sound. Does a great job to be able to do that. Of course, it's educating that there'll be four holes in it that are then patched over, and so it looks like the dice. But with regards to that, that is one of our tools in our toolbox. We've done slicing, meaning that if it's up enough, but there's enough meat in the sidewalk, we shave it, and we shave it down and cut that off. And then, of course, as you talk about, is full restoration. It just depends on how severe that gap is, that really honestly, it just doesn't work in a sidewalk raising program. It really needs to be removed. And if there's a manhole associated nearby from the sanitary sewer system, then getting all that adjusted as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. We actually have an item that we're talking about trying to come into the city today, and then we have that Massey Oaks project. Those are all in this diagram here. Those are all... And then we have that Massey Oaks project. Those are all in, in this diagram here. Those are all in kind of little crosshatched, little dotted areas that are in the ETJ, right?
No, sir. It is lower than that. So, it, it's kinda hard to explain, but it'll be, I mean, looking at what maps we have on the, on the screen. But it's actually in the city limits, south of County Road one hundred.
Yeah. So, it's over there. Okay. So, my, my, I guess my question is, is, is we're starting to have a couple of items come into the city. What are we doing on the acceptance periods for new roads? And then how are we dealing with that? Because now we're, we're already realizing we have a tougher time just keeping the road quality up on what's existing, let alone bringing on some roads that are in areas that are not necessarily particularly nice or have aged infrastructure. So, what is our request on behalf of those items that come in?
So, Councilman Camkar, associated with that, when any, any subdivision comes in for approval, when it's all done and built per our standards, there is a two-year maintenance bond associated with that. So, at the end of two years, we do a city walkthrough with the developer and the contractor. And then that bond is used then if necessary, but usually it's just identified, replaced, repaired, moved on, and then that's a two-year walkthrough.
Now, is there any contribution to the city, whether it be through an impact fee or some other item for some of those that are coming in or no?
No, sir. Other than, you know, water and wastewater impact fees when you do housing connections, but not a street impact fee?
Well, and not, maybe not an impact fee, but TIA requirements may force them to upgrade a street or an intersection or a road or whatever as well.
Of the existing, Mayor, you are correct. Absolutely. If, if attaching to an existing road that requires an upgrade, that would be handled through the traffic impact analysis.
Got it. Okay. And then, uh, this is a really, really good one here. I like this diagram here. Question on the, the projects that we do still have outstanding, obviously the eight oh four is whatever the state was, I guess, maybe we could go. How are we sourcing this? Is it priority of, of this or is it the age of the request? How are you guys initiating what, because you're saying as we have available resources and time, we go out there because of the need of having the whole crew. How is that sourced?
Maybe if y'all can walk them through the, the scorecard you do when there's a, for sidewalk repairs.
I was just gonna have Mr. Prescott do that. That way you can see how he, how his staff ranks that.
So, to answer your question, so if there's a trip hazard in the sidewalk, let's say greater than three inches, essentially it'll be scored as a high priority. Whereas you may have one that would score it as a low priority with a one-inch trip hazard. But the date that that work order was put in may place that at a high priority. So, we're not just gonna say since yours is a lower trip hazard, you fall to the back of the line. That one-inch trip hazard could very well be a high priority based on when that work order was placed.
Okay, great. And I wanna go to the thoroughfare piece while we're here. Can we go to the list of projects that is kind of not scored high enough? This is a double-sided item.
You're talking about the list of potential future bond projects?
Eight sixty-two, eight sixty-two.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor.
I wouldn't say they haven't scored high enough. They just haven't been in a program at this point. So, they're being looked at in the future programs.
Appreciate the semantics on that answer. First of all, I wanna also go back before I go that the sidewalk thing is a gigantic issue for systems. I've talked about over and over and before I get off that topic, thank you guys for, for, that's a lot of work and it's hard and it's not easy. And it's in the hot sun and people are hunking horns at you and all that stuff because you're in the middle of the road. But, uh, great job on that. So, into the team. Really quickly, there's a buzzword in HDAC slash transportation word, regionally significant collector. I think that's the word. Trent, any of these items hit on that quote-unquote regionally significant collector? That, you know, is, may, may get into the positive scoring zone?
I may have to get Robert to help me out here. So, yeah, when they're, when they're looking at a regionally significant connector, you know, it's, it's typically something you're gonna see like Cullen Boulevard, where, you know, it, it connects south of us, it connects north of us to Houston. I think that's gonna fall in that category for them. So, some of our roads potentially do that would be Reed and then Veterans, Kingsley, Dixie Farm and Harkey potentially. So.
It's, it's those ones that, that they're gonna connect. If you go back, if we looked at the thoroughfare plan, the things that are gonna connect to the adjoining communities.
Just for the public knowledge. So, you go to HDAC and there's always, all the cities and the counties get together and they start scoring lists onto the tip, transportation improvement plan. And that's kinda like the near term item. The request I would have for the staff and the guidance, this is only me, nobody else speaking, just me, is that we just be really cognizant of the amount of traffic and infrastructure. We've got the Pearland Parkway updates and, and we've, we're doing McCard. And there's just a lot of infrastructure all going in at one time. And it seems like we're doing a lot. And I, I would just ask that we, we be more nuanced in how we decide that sequence of what we think is regionally significant. It's just really hard for me to go and have another major project on top of another major project in the same area. The Kingsley one, I think that is a good one, but it's on the other side of town as compared to an area that, that has a lot. So, my, my advocacy to the staff is just, let's be aware of that. I do think these projects have to go and, and sequence is important, but it, it's just a lot to put on the same residents who have to go commute every single day to have another regionally significant collector, a big project that they have to work through. And so, I would just ask that we be more cognizant. I think the projects need to happen, but that, that's something that I'm aware of, that, that we, we have to do all of them. But it seems like we're doing a lot in the same area and I like to space that out if possible.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, the other, the other piece we look at when we go to apply for those funds is we are looking at what is the scoring criteria? What are the traffic counts? What's the cost-benefit ratios on safety as well as mobility? To see what we have the best chance at capturing some of those outside dollars to get those projects done. So, that, you know, tho, those are, those are a factor as well. And then as always, you know, any of these projects before we go submit them or before we develop a bond program, it, it takes the input of, of council as well as to, you know, where we need to put those dollars to make sure we're not, you know, putting them where, where it's causing any sort of other types of issues as you described.
And I'm, and I'm thankful for the team. You guys are getting what, twenty-one million of the sixty million we have in CIP is, is coming from dollars outside of our, our city. And I'm extremely thankful. That reduces the burden on, on mom and dad. It just, you know, we, we get a certain amount of choice and then it's scoring. And I just wanna be cognizant of that. So, but thank you to the team. A great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all mentioned the five eighteen corridor study. I guess, can you speak to timing on that study as compared to when McCard will be open? And if we're gonna have a chance to actually see relief from McCard? Or are we gonna come in and, and do one study and then have to go back and update it several years later?
Are you referencing the thoroughfare or the mobility plan update?
H fifty-eight.
Right. So, if you're, you're talking with regards to our partnership with HDAC. So, once they get their AFA squared away with TechStop and that gets approved and we move forward, we still have advertisement and consultant selection that still needs to be done to determine who's gonna do that, then negotiate an award. So, you're several months out, probably into twenty twenty-three. McCard is planned to be done and open towards the end of this year. So, there'll be time based on how fast TechStop moves when we start talking AFAs. And then scope and advertising, we all agree to that price. And then we come negotiate, then come to you for approval as well. By the time that there should be, it should be opening and seeing how traffic transitions with McCard running and five eighteen. The caveat though is trying to get it between when McCard's open, but before TechStop decides to start doing construction on five eighteen. So, we can kinda get that free movement that's happening while both roads are open. That answer your question, sir?
Yeah, it does. Just, I mean, as soon as we, we go cut the ribbon on McCard, not everybody's gonna start using it. So, it takes, takes a while. So, I appreciate you explaining that, but I don't know that that's gonna give us the full benefit of a, of a study that's not gonna change. I don't know if there's any, if there's any opportunity to delay, delay that, to give us some better data as we get closer. I, I think that'd make more sense.
I think we can do that and we can continue to update that data. I do think it's important, as Robert said, that if, if five eighteen goes under construction in twenty twenty-five as currently planned, that'll change the dynamics as well. And then, of course, any of these corridor studies like that, they're, you know, they're gonna use today's data. They're gonna also look at the, our CIP plan, anything else that's in the tip and run that through their, their mobility or transportation models to project, you know, not just next year, but, you know, fifteen, twenty-five years in the future to, to really drive some of the decisions of those studies. But we'll, we'll continue to update that and push that where we can.
Mayor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I get some on the Harkey? I guess, what was that? A re-overlayer, whatever, what reconstruction of Harkey? What, what happened there? Because there was a lot of complaints of tar on cars and there were black marks all over the other streets adjacent to Harkey. And just kinda curious what, what happened there. It seemed like there were some issues.
Are you talking with regards to this slide up here or are you talking about with regards to a road project to rehabilitate that road? I mean, in terms of.
Yeah, was it Harkey or McLean?
That was when we had some issue with the, with the county out there. What was the, I can't remember the root cause of that, but.
So, the root cause of that was, is that, and I know Dante will, can expand if we really want detail. But basically that was a road project with the, with Brazoria County's Road and Bridge Group to be able to pave that road. And it took seven months to be able to pave that road. And that, and then our crew is our crew of nine to eleven with regards to traffic control and then putting oil down. And then that oil then signage not being driven around or then moved, took that oil, tracked it down the road from residents and cars that are in there. And that's what caused all that tracking was the oil or the tack coat that would go down after the road has been rehabilitated, ready to go for asphalt.
So, is residents basically ignoring or moving the signage, not some type of a, an issue with the actual, I guess, people doing the project?
No, it would be with traffic after hours. Then we had rain and then we had multiple things happen. And then we missed, I believe that there was a couple of roads that may have been blockaded at one point. Then the signs were turned, moved, and all of a sudden they're out driving. And like I said, it was tacked, ready to go, but then it poured rain or got too cold. I mean, and then you gets on your tires and then tracks out.
People should just pay attention and obey the signs?
We will continue to improve. We'll continue to improve our communication out.
Got it.
And one of the beauty things associated with our next contract with Brazoria County and that they're working on is that they're doing all traffic control now.
Okay, awesome.
Versus a group effort.
Another question about, I think there was some traction with the extension or the connecting of the sidewalk on Veterans just north of the recreation center where that, that little bridge is gonna go in. I haven't driven over there in a while, but just, I just wonder what the status of that is.
So, that falls within our Safe Roots to Schools project that is with TechStop that's being rebid right now due to a discrepancy in the bidding.
Okay, got it. So, we talked about trying to be proactive on getting some better road sidewalk conditions. Is there in, I, I've attended several conferences here recently where I've seen some technology that can be fitted to vehicles and stuff that can do some scanning. Is there any potential for us to do a program with, that we could pair with our solid waste partner as the trucks are going up and down streets to be able to scan some of this, the roads and sidewalks for?
So, one of the, so one of the things associated with that, that will be out receiving propos, not proposals, but statements of qualifications from vendors who can provide the information on our roads. But it's also road, when we look at this, we look at roads, we look at signage, so striping, what's the condition of striping we track? Curbs, sidewalks, street signs. All those are taken a look at when, with the vehicles and technologies today. One of the technologies out there is what you're talking about, Councilman Hernandez, is that they could mount seismic sensors associated to vehicles. We could outfit our own vehicles with it, but that is just creating the road condition. It does not go out and give me what we would holistically look for, for a holistic approach of curbs, sidewalks, signage, and then also striping conditions underneath and markings. So, that's only one facet. Is it something to look at maybe as a long-term or something down the road? There's a potential for that, but we would look holistically first because that's what we need to do when we build our programs and are data-driven. It's not just one facet. It is the whole prism.
And I only ask because I, I try to think of what vehicles are driving up and down basically all of our streets all of the time. And so, that just kinda popped into my, my brain there. So, estimated miles of the gaps for sidewalks, I saw that was something we were potentially trying to put onto the bond. Do we kinda know what that is? And will that create any type of actual connectivity, maybe east to west?
So, as we go through looking at our sidewalks, and that's one of the inventories, when these, when Dante's staff and the, and the crews go out and walk around and take a look is where are these gaps? We could have it only sixteen feet. You know, it's two divisions that all of a sudden, they're just not there. To give you an answer, is that looking at the old twenty fourteen, when we were looking at that, that provided some information. We've developed a budget based on so many miles and what the cost is to lay sidewalk. And right now have a, a guesstimate on what that value is and what that quantity is. I'll have to report exactly what that is when we develop that budget of about fifteen million dollars. But that was broken out at about five million dollars a year for about three to four years.
Yeah. So, that was one of my other questions, which I know is gonna be a tough one. But the twenty fourteen number of four-point-nine million for the next five years to maintain PCI of seventy on the network. Do we have any ballpark of what we think the revised number will be? Or just, does that just ask way too much?
That until we run our new pavement condition index, develop our formulas, develop that, the answer would be no.
Say that we haven't met that, you know, four-point-nine million dollars annually. We haven't.
So, we know it's getting worse.
We haven't even come close to that. So, our expectation when we do this is that we'll probably see that PCI fall some. But we'll, we'll wait for the results to give actual numbers.
And then, and then to dovetail onto that too, by setting the standard from seventy-two to seventy and follow in line more with our national average in the lower parts of the U.S., you know, that drops down two points, but that four-point-nine million was what needed to be funded above a maintenance and ma, and operations. That's like crack ceiling, few other potholes, things like that. It is strictly mill up, roll, put new, put overlays down, et cetera. Was four-point-nine as, as Mr. Ederson stated earlier. So, that was then. Hopefully with new PCI, new formulation, cost comparisons and what our rating is today on an average basis. And then looking at it per road segment, we can develop what that cost will be.
We got a forty-two, we got this chart here. Yeah, there we go. Graph. Sorry, teacher. Can, can you maybe give me a little bit more information on kind of what this is? Because I'm, if, what I'm thinking is if we're dipping below seventy as, or seventy-two on our net, our network average, and we're gonna have to do more kind of bringing things up to a standard rather than maintaining a standard. And I see that there are some numbers here, like spending a dollar in preservation here and then eliminates. Can you kinda explain a little bit more about what that means?
Sure. Councilman Hernandez, this is a, a typical graph that we get when we do pavement condition indexes that is used throughout the industry. It shows that at the very beginning of life, life being zero through twenty, so twenty years of life on the X-axis and condition of that pavement on the Y-axis, X, Y-axis, excellent being one hundred, failed being zero at the bottom. You'll see that all our roads, as Mr. Prescott mentioned, is that when we take a road, you're, you're in good condition, excellent condition, that eighty to a hundred, eighty-six to a hundred. And your road will continue over life, you know, seven years of life in an asphalt road. At that point, you wanna be able to reinvest. That might be chip sealing, that might be a fog, might be an oil. Continue to hydrate, maybe some crack sealing along the way because maybe you have a little bit of settlement. But you wanna be able to plug that because if you don't plug that, that allows water to get in to ruin the subbase. So, that little investment then helps bring that road back up a little bit. So, it's not gonna keep falling down the curve. This curve that you see that then drops off suddenly is if you're not doing anything, you're just kinda keep going and letting it grow, letting the roads go. Then you'll start seeing them go to fair and then to pour. And then when it starts to hit that fair to pour, that's when you see that rapid decline quickly. That's when you start seeing that alligator-ing. It looks like alligator scales, little pieces that could pop up where you head down into road failure. Then you hit into the very poor end of life. And so, spending a little bit more, a little additional upfront in terms of that five, that seven-year to the fog, which is putting an oil coat down and re-striping or putting a chip seal down, doing some crack maintenance, doing spot repairs or doing a, a thin mill and then an overlay right back on it. Those are all activities that help extend that life and then recapitalizes that road and gets you back up a little bit. And then changes where that curve and where it falls off until you start getting into that twenty to thirty to forty-year life, depending on concrete. or full life of asphalt that you then need to fully rehab, helps prolong that.
So the roads that we're having redone, when those are done, we're expecting those to be done to a condition of 100, I'm assuming is what our?
They'll probably be, they'll more than likely be in that 90 to 100. Okay. Cause they're an existing road. It's not like if I'm down in Massey Oaks where I'm blading a brand new, packing in, doing brand new road. These were being reclaimed. We'll mill off what we have, do base repairs we need to grade, pack, and then put new road down.
Okay, cool. I got three more things. I thought they should be very quick.
McCard would be a new road.
Yes.
Right.
As an example.
So speaking of McCard, is there any value in moving O'Day up to try to connect McCard to Broadway? Cause I think if I am going to use McCard as an alternative, needing to get back to Broadway, I'd want as many, you know, you know, easy ways to get between those two roads.
So Councilman Hernandez, one of the things, if you, if we go back to, I'd like to put up slide 52, if you don't mind. When we take a look at the thoroughfare plan, when we get there, it's on your screen now. You'll see that we look at O'Day, it is considered a minimum 100 foot, which would be a secondary thoroughfare. You take a look at Roy Road or Hatfield, those are our 80 foot major collectors. Those roads are all identified as roads that we would need to plan for in some form or fashion, meaning that plan the budget, execute that, expand to the road that needs to be a four lane road. We'll use O'Day as the example. And then Harkey down south is the southern portion of that. And then that would be one of those collectors that would then be able to connect complete north, south. As you know, the city has done a fabulous job in planning and visioning east and west corridors. McCard Road, Bailey, Magnolia, 518, even though I know that's Tech Dot, all the way out to 521. Our time needs to also turn towards our north, south connectors now. And taking a look at moving that mobility, as you stated, for example, when, if and when, I say, when Broadway goes under construction, people want to go up north, get on McCard or go south and go down to Magnolia. Taking a look at those two lane asphalt roads with roadside ditches, is it time to start investing in that and planning ahead? Be able to then take a look at gaining that, that, that road width, build it to a concrete road with a enclosed pipe system for stormwater. And then send up, be able to utilize traffic that way. That's what we always propose. We will continue to propose as ideas. It's then, as we stated, we look to the voters to be able to take your recommendations and put those on the, on the, on the voting bond program.
Okay. I didn't see an asterisk on that, but I see the value in trying to make those connections between the two easier. So and then the destination wayfinding program can just, it's, I'm assuming that's just, did some quick Googling, that's just a sign program? What are we trying to direct and, and make clearer for people?
So a lot of things are there are wayfinding. When you take a look, you look at a lot of entities that are out there that partner. Be able to put them to destinations, point of entrance, interest, a rec center, to city hall, downtown. Could take a look at, hey, go this, take this turn, get over to a, a wayfinding point that is associated with a trailhead. So you could then proceed from there. It's just points of way to give points of interest and points of destination.
I, I do see some value in trying to do that, especially since we've been spending money on, on trying to enhance the, you know, our corridors, make them more beautiful and put in, you know, some more landscaping, stuff like that. I think if we did have a nice sign program in place to enhance that as well, there would be some, some value in that and helping people kind of get around and find the major, you know, parks and trailheads and buildings and things like that. Two more things, Mayor. Sorry. Almost done. The dashboard that was shown with the outstanding work orders, will any of that ever be public facing on the GIS? So people can kind of see what's going on work order wise?
So we're kind of having a little conversation back with our internal service manager who oversees our asset management. I think one thing we'll take a look at is that as we continue to build that work order system out, as we continue to build all of our programs into it, it'd be something that can be looked at as we continue down that path. But currently, right now, I will say is that we are in the crawling stage of that and we're solely concentrating on getting our work orders, getting everybody trained and taught how to use that work order system and telling and coaching our residents and coaching everyone who wants to input in to say, hey, we have a pothole here. We have this to understand how it works. And then with that notifications being built back out to say, hey, you're, you're in line or hey, thank you very much. Go from here.
So is that an eventual goal, I guess?
Yes. Okay. It's an eventual goal.
Got it. Final question. Do we have any current existing right of way availability on either Magnolia or McCard, and that comes online to eventually add any bike lanes going east, west? I've, I've been in contact with a bike club that is using Magnolia currently and obviously trying to provide some more safety features for them to safely bike east, west.
Councilman Hernandez, with regards to that, that road comes equipped with a 10 foot multi-use path. And the roads are set up into 12 foot wide lanes. So not, not a 15 foot wide lane that has three or four feet identified for a bike lane on side of that. Working with Tech Dot, that was part of that criteria to have a 10 foot multi-use path on that road.
That's on McCard.
That's on McCard.
That was, yeah. So Magnolia is pretty tight. It's 100 foot right of way. Some of it's actually squeezed down to 90. So I think the sidewalk system we got out there is probably all we could squeeze in there. We do have some segments where the sidewalk is wider. I think up to eight feet because it was part of the overall trail plan and trail system. So there's a few areas where it's, it's wider. But I don't, you know, there's not a whole lot of right of way there through that corridor to add.
With McCard, once that comes on, we'll have that.
Yeah. 10 foot multi-use, just like we have on Bailey, Cullen and several others where we've got those.
Awesome. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Good, good, good.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Prescott was, in his presentation, he said there's nine full-time employees for streets and sidewalks. I wrote down that he also said that five full-time employees were requested. Did I, was I hearing things or did you say that?
That's correct.
When were they requested? Is it?
For FY 23 budget.
Thank you. And I appreciate it. Thank you. And then one other thing on the, the city works, I believe is what Councilmember Hernandez was asking about. That's right now, which is just for the, for the employees to use?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. And Trenton can.
And maybe Priya can help us out. Priya Baca is our internal services manager over the asset management group. And I believe we've got some forward-facing pieces of that as well.
So we're taking things from like Connect to Pearland, things people turn in and then putting it into the city works?
So we've got Connect to Pearland. It actually each directly into is integrated with, and then I believe we've got a portal on our website as well for inputting.
Correct. Currently we use Connect to Pearland. So when a resident submits a service request that is automatically generated to a service request and City Works that is utilized by our city staff for engineering, public works and parks and recreation. And if, if you're logged into the app, it provides notification that a service request has been created with the ID number and allows for an update of when a service request is turned into a work order, then closed. But you have to be logged in. And then we also have another portal on our website that is built out through Rock Solid, who's also builds out our Connect to Pearland app. And that allows for it to talk to City Works, but we need to make some enhancements there. But those are some of the portals we use and City Works is used by our staff to complete service requests, work orders and inspections.
So, so there's future enhancements of that to where we'll have more forward-facing things. But that's where we are at this point. And I think that helps answer maybe question Member Hernandez asked earlier about used to on Connect to Pearland. If you put in a work order request, you got back a message that said your work order has been closed. And that's because that system at the time was not connected to anything. We didn't have City Works. And so our staff would have to take it from that system and input it into the HCE system. And then it was closed out over there. And so now that it's connected, you don't immediately get this, it's been closed out. You get that it's a service request has been created in a work order and then eventually it's closed. And, and that's another enhancement we're looking at in the future where that can provide more additional information as it goes through the process to be addressed.
Thank you.
Remember Barry?
I've got nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
I had one other quick item. Mr. Upson, we had the guy from Tech Dot come by about the connection from Spur 5 elevated all the way to Alvin. That's like six months ago, eight months ago. Is that still dead in the water?
Yeah, I think that was, oh, that was even longer ago than that. I think it's been a while.
Been about a year.
You know, as, as the mayor can, you know, communicate or express as well, we, I sit on the technical advisory committee. The mayor sits on the transportation policy council. And year or so ago, when Tech Dot wanted to put that back into the 2045 regional transportation plan, we were able to keep that project from going into the plan. And so we've been working with City of Houston and HDAC to move to more of a corridor analysis or assessment to go look at the, the need and purpose of that facility, you know, start from there. What is the need and purpose of it and does, is, are there other solutions other than an elevated freeway that provide that same mobility benefits? Or the mobility benefits that the local communities see fit for that corridor? So right now there is no freeway project connecting through us. There, there, there is an existing project to extend Spur 5 to basically 610 Loop and just south of there, but that's as far as anything is in the plan or budgeted at this point.
I just remember that and I remember we had robust.
We'll continue to.
We've had several robust conversations with Tech Dot and the City of Houston about it as well on the TPC. To echo, we, we've had nothing but great cooperation with City of Houston. They had the same concerns that we did. They felt like they were, you know, they, they felt like they were in the wind and nobody was listening. And so we were actually able to pair up and, and we had the same concerns. So I look forward to, you know, hopefully at, at both the TAC and the TPC level, we'll be approving a, a study in the coming year where we can do this corridor assessment, needs and purpose. And it goes back to that. Every project that goes on the RTP and ultimately into the tip has to have a need and purpose. And it's interesting when you had asked Tech Dot about what's the stated need and purpose and they, they would direct to something else and not answer the question. So part of that is, well, let's go back and actually get a need and purpose before we decide what, what the facility is going to be. Pretty interesting. So let's go to, I guess it's 65 and get an update on the surface water treatment plant.
Sure. Before we jump into that, Mayor, I did want to, you met most of our team. We also have Kayla with us here tonight and Tiffany. They are really the ones that put these bud, the, the capital projects budget together. Help us, you know, with, with all the behind the scenes on the funding and as we work through that budget every year and then help us put together this, this presentation. So they deserve a lot of credit for what, what you see again here tonight as well. So with that, I don't see Skipper. So is it you, Robert?
As I mentioned last Monday, you guys get to get me now.
Let's just keep in mind, we do have a 6:30 development workshops.
This will be very brief, Mayor.
And then our questions towards it.
And continuing through this, Mayor, as, as one of the requests that we will continue to provide surface water plant updates as we move forward with that project, as we continue to have CIP updates. So with that, just a quick update, project's budget was 175 million. To date, no new money has been added to that project. So staying within the project budget. Main issues that we talked about last time and continuing to inhibit us when we continuing to move forward to cause us some delays is that electrical gear. Electrical switch gear is, is the issue. We are starting to actually receive a couple of components, looking for the remainder of late June, early July for the balance of those electrical cabinets. Hopefully be able to get those in and start connecting them up. Having electricity is the key to getting equipment moving. As, as we are aware with, with the loan associated with Texas Water Development Board, that project does require that American iron and steel is utilized. Sometimes we will see that currently right now, we could be 16 to 22 weeks out. Some fittings are also simply not available. So we are looking at alternative approaches, one of that being alternative materials such as HDPE. That would not be regulated by that American iron and steel. Or so far as taking a look at a temporary installation, marking that as temporary, knowing that when we get the part in and we'll replace that to be able to meet the funding obligations necessary. So as mentioned already, I already alluded to HDPE, no funding restrictions. It is adaptable, of course. It can be fused together and continue from there, but this requires our engineer to continue to take a look at those items. Make sure that everything is correctly modified or also is able to handle the flows necessary with the correct pipe diameter. So temporary installations, I said that would be potentially some higher costs. Longer involvement by our construction manager at risk, but not, it's not an optimal solution. It can be done, but we're looking at as a last resort to keep schedule and salvage that. Ideally looking at other options such as HDPE or other ways to meet that requirement. And finally, schedule. Schedule, I said, is the medium voltage wiring for our switchgear along with the switchgear itself. Messes and jeopardizes our, our connection with center point because they're wanting to connect in and pull their wire from the poles in, but they won't pull their wire in until you have the switchgear in place. So a little bit of chasing, chasing around the Roseberry, Roseberry Bush, you know, who's going to get there first? Delays will also be impacted with our certification of proper installation of equipment because we want to power test that, make sure everything's operating, make sure it flows. So all that just kind of falls in line. So hopefully we'll get our last componentry at the end of this month, first of July, and then we'll get stuff moving. Moving forward now is that we're taking a look in that third quarter, early fourth quarter 2023 to bring true water into the system. Testing will continue. Testing will be starting. But true water into the system where everything is flowing correctly is looking, based on these impacts is looking in the third quarter, late third quarter, early fourth quarter of 23. That concludes, Mr. Uperson, that concludes our update on the surface water plant.
Mayor Council, we thank you for the extra time this afternoon to present all this and, and get your input and feedback. Appreciate it.
Can we pull up 67? I want to, I know Skipper usually takes these two questions. Are we currently still in the project budget?
Yes.
Okay. And when is our delivery and where has it moved? So we have that out there for the public record.
So with regards to that, our last question, our last statement that we discussed with you is about August. And now due to delays associated with electrical gear, we're in October.
How many months is that?
Two months.
And just for the record, I will say this again. Darren, what are we responsible for? And has that, that preservation of who is responsible for over just change?
If they are owner initiated changes, then the owner is going to be responsible for them. Otherwise, then the additional time is at, at the C Mar is at risk.
All I got.
Remember Hernandez has a question?
This is more of a, well, I guess it is a question. Have we reached out at all to see if this, these delays are occurring, I'm assuming in other cities like TML and LLC? Do we have any movement there?
This is, it's a nationwide, I mean, there's.
Could we make an appeal as a city to our members of Congress to see what potentially could be done to, to give some alternative pathways?
We have been working with Texas Water Development Board, trying to find ways to be able to work around the American iron and steel. Looks like there are discussions happening at the director level of Texas Water Development Board to be able to look at equipment holistically or a mechanical piece holistically is that of that mechanical piece? How much of it really needs to be American iron and steel? Can if it's, if this componentry, we'll say this header pipe that connects to this pump is all one piece. Could 5% of that, or could this particular piece that we're missing be considered inconsequential or de minimis? So we are working on that right now. We're having some positive feedback, but until I get formal notification and formal agreement to what is, what's called de minimis or what is minor and inconsequential. We are operating under the fact that all parts need to bear American iron steel.
Okay. I was just curious if we reach out because I know, you know, there are a lot of moving parts happening right now with all sorts of different things moving through Congress. Is it, I asked the mayor, this is a federal thing, right? Yeah. So.
So, so to add to that is that this is what's called first generation money from EPA under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. This first generation means we have to follow with EPA. So if we call up and say, hey, I'd like to have a waiver associated with this. The statement is, is they have about 16 to 20 vendors that they would call on their behalf, EPA. Could you get American iron steel in this size pipe? Well, the answer is yes. It comes down. It comes down to delay. How long is it? 16 weeks or 36 weeks before you can get that part?
Okay.
So that, that, as soon as EPA would have an answer associated with, yes, we, we a material vendor can get that material, the next question is not asked. They just go, okay, thank you.
All right.
And just so you'll know, I sat through a presentation on this, uh, just last Friday.